Lord, we thank you for this day and for all the many blessings of life, Lord, that you blessed upon each and every one of us. God, I pray right now that you'll be with the Rogers family, Lord, as a dear friend of mine. God, I pray that you'll just be with them. God, I pray that you'll be with his body of commissioners, Lord, as they get ready to take on the task at hand. And I pray, God, that you'll bless them. I pray, God, most of all, that you'll continue to bless not only our nation, but our county. Rich in your son, Jesus Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rockall.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Daniel Diorz. Dewey Eskenot. Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey. John Pipinger.
Here.
Samantha Trancom.
Here.
And James Woody.
Here.
First on agenda is the post approval minutes of previous meeting.
Motion to approve and approve.
Got a motion by John Holt, second by Samantha, any discussion? Rockall.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
Sorry. James Woody.
Yes.
A little too far there.
Next is approval of report. Motion to approve. Samantha made a motion.
Second.
Motion by Samantha, second by John Holt, any discussion? Rockall.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot. Mark Evans. John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next is approval of notice. We got several. If I miss one, somebody let me know what I think I got wrong. John M. I. N. G. M. I. M. E. I. N. T. G. S. Can't read it from that.
Menches.
M. I. N. Chris Gill, John Zoss, multiple. Sean Guy, he's from Duck Town. Michael Kern.
From Oodlewall, but they work at Search Star.
At least, that's fine. He works here in the county.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan from Springtown, who works at Farm Bureau. I believe it's all of them. I missed one. If that's all of them, there is.
Four.
Next motion to approve, three, or four.
Noted.
Got a motion by James, second by Samantha, any discussion of the notice? Rockall.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Uh, we're gonna put budget amendments on bottom of agenda. Want to take five and go down tonight may affect budget amendment, so we'll do it at the end. Next, the commissioner's opinion. I'm gonna speak about the rodeo.
The rodeo, uh, yes. Uh, the committee met with the fair, so county fair association during that meeting, uh, week, May, went to headway trying to clear some issues up, I think. And hopefully, we will have the fair back on track in the meantime. And I'm not saying for this year. The timeline, the deadlines for the study had already come up, and so, uh, some other things that come up with that act were, uh, who else was there from the fair association at night? Debbie.
Uh-huh, and I heard Joyce and.
Joyce and.
Martha.
I think Martha.
Martha.
We're the two, she was at Martha and Joyce, Stafford were both there. Joyce is the president of the fair association. There was a question, only could we put something in place at least to kind of fill in, not replace the fair, but to, uh, to provide the county something, um, to have this year. Uh, one of the recommendations by Commissioner Evans was a rodeo. We did meet with representative from, uh, the same people that do Taylor's, uh, rodeo down in Cleveland. It's outlaw rodeo incorporated. And he is willing to do a rodeo on the only date that we have open, and he has open, it's open for football schedules. And he has it open. It's the last date he has. That's October sixth and seventh, on the Saturday and Sunday. On Friday and Saturday. Mark, you remember?
Pretty Friday, sure.
Friday and Saturday, because he said Sunday just didn't bring the, uh, the rodeo people in. It is six thousand dollar minimum, and that's a kind of a two-term deal. He'll do it for that. Uh, we keep the proceeds from the sales of the advertising, which if we decide to do it, I've already had five interested parties at banners which would take up about a half of that six thousand dollar cost. Right at it. Um, and that's without really trying. We also kept, was it half or twenty-five percent of the gate, Mark?
Thank you, sir. I think you said twenty-five.
It may have been twenty-five percent of the gate.
I like the way you said.
The only thing they requested was that if we done it, that we put money at least the first year or two years, because he's done it at what he considers a good use. Introducery type thing to get it established, is that that money go back in, in his spend in preparation for the next rodeo. There was also some interest from him in another conversation a little bit later, and also having it above the mountains in the future and advertising it as a tri-state rodeo on the con place there. I guess what I'm asking is give the county executive permission to proceed to enter in with contract or an agreement with outlaw rodeos incorporated. And, uh, to draw down thugs up to six thousand, make sure that we get the rodeo locked in and in the county. And like I said, the revenue should offset and supersede the six thousand. If it doesn't supersede in the first year, from the sounds of it and looks of it, and what Taylor's and all doing, it would the second, third year. It might break the mission. I did meet with him. Uh, Mark was pretty at that time. Mark, you got anything to add on it?
You've got it. We just gotta, if everybody's for it, we gotta get the arena ready up there.
Then there will be some associated costs with that through the parks and rec line item. Uh, that will, uh, it would have to be made. There is no power where he's looking at is the horse showing arena, where they were showing rock, uh, racking horses and showing horses for a while. Uh, he'll put his gate up inside the existing arena, but the ground's gotta be clear. It's gotta be, uh, soft grating and soft hill. And we've gotta get the electric back out there. Electric does run to the, uh, press box. I had two people go look at it. They were not going to press box. They went inside the bottle, basically looked in, and it said as far as that's going, because it's fixing the bottle. Which is another issue. We're gonna need to get that thing pulling down on the top side before somebody gets hurt. If, if we're interested in doing it, we need to act now and get it started, because the lock-in's tempered. And, uh, if we don't say, yeah, we're gonna do it, then, then it will not happen.
Well, I feel like it's, uh, um, we need something. We've not been able to have a fair now in two years.
Three.
It's been three coming hard.
And, uh, so I think it's a pretty much a, a good opportunity to have something for people to go to and open the door for hopefully, future of it, um, without very little risk. I mean, you know, it's gonna be very minimal if we don't get back the initial cost.
Go ahead.
Tell you what I'll do. If y'all go with this, I'll provide the, uh, necessary resources to get that electrical back on. You pay for the materials, I'll see to it. It gets repaired and burned down.
You have enough?
That we're talking about setting the box to the outside of the building, and you're aware of that?
I think, John, if we pull a meter on that, there may be a meter vein already on that out there.
There is, but it's not on the side of the building. It's.
Right, right. And it may be that, you know, you can get with him, he might would rather have a backstop done with a meter vein without, like, where you just looked into it. Do away with that building. That way you just carry it down and get rid of it.
He said he would bring a trailer in to do the press room, because the building was not.
Right.
And it ain't.
Well, if you'll get him with me, I'll find out what he needs or if you pay for the materials. Fire the park myself, we'll see to it. That gets rigged up and turned down.
Just pay for the materials, I'll work that. If, if, if there's not a motion, the county executive proceed on it, as he's the only one that can sign the contract, and, uh, that is the standard procedure where he's done it in the county. Most of the time, this guy does it with the rural clubs and other organizations with a five oh one C three, or at least recognized as a charter. So this is a little bit different from him. He has done it in the past, but it is a little, uh, more cumbersome than what, uh, usually is.
I'll make a motion to grant the, Robby permission to go ahead and do contract, do whatever he needs to do, and let's move forward on it.
No second.
Got a motion by Debbie, second by Mark. The motion forward with the rodeo.
Does that include the, uh, balance of the six thousand, not to exceed, uh, on the contract? Cause I know we get into a little bit of issue. I mean, does that include the money?
Yeah, I mean, let's move forward with it. I mean, you know, it's, it's not one big much, you know.
Have you talked to any organizations that would sponsor that?
Not directly. Uh, Parks and Rec will be, uh, doing the initial, uh, work with the county back before it gets the ground prep ready. Uh, matter of fact, I talked to, to, uh, one of the groups that does the pickup. County executive on that from Parks and Rec is going for it. Uh, there's a couple of options out there. To keep it to where the money comes back in, to be reutilized on the parks the first two years. You're about gonna have to stay somewhat in-house, uh, or at least like Little League ballers, something to that effect, that's willing to put the money back into the lines for the beneficiaries on these problems. Now, after the first two years, he said it should be open to anybody, the boys and girls of, uh, rural clubs. Uh, you've got, uh, hope. We are, we are hope. There's different organizations out there that, uh, fit the bill a little better on the third year. But, uh, no, no, I'm not, as far as right now. And I wasn't gonna do anything until absolutely knew that the commission was gonna buy it. Because I'll be honest with you, I wasn't looking forward to paying six thousand dollars to bring a rodeo in that the county wasn't backing.
Well, when it, if we get this passed, it'll be the first thing.
Right.
We start with six thousand if there's inclement weather and we can't have it. They'll have it.
You raise the money.
Raise the money, somebody be out there last season.
I don't think the county ought to be getting into the ro- rodeo business. I don't have no problem with, uh, a rodeo in the county, but I think somebody else ought to be.
That's what we're doing. They're going.
Taking care of it.
Well, we're starting it, because nobody else has.
But there are parks and recs.
We're starting it, so we need something to kind of.
Well, change the commerce. Free for their county.
That's what they ought to do, get, get them minded. What about the fair association?
Let them do it.
Now, this is not to offset the fair.
That's what went forth in the past.
Well, that makes sense, I think.
I got a motion by, who made that motion? Debbie.
Debbie.
And, uh, second by Mark. Rockall.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Woody.
No.
It's yes, one no.
Next is Commissioner Eskenot. We got a fair share resolution.
I talked with Dan Howell, our representative here in Tennessee for Polk County, and Chuck Fleischman about the Forest Service not paying their fair share every year. When we do budgets, we have no idea how much money is coming in each year, and it's hard to do a budget when you don't know what's coming in. So I asked them what could we possibly do? And Dan said that we should do a resolution here. If it gets passed, send it on to him. He'll get the state to do one, pass it, and send it on to Chuck Fleischman, who will hopefully get it done in Washington. Something that'll give us something steady and a fair share, because right now, they've got a hundred and sixty-three or sixty-eight thousand acres here in the county. They're only paying a pilt, which is payment lieu taxes on a hundred and fifty-one thousand acres. And I said, can we just take that other land they're not paying taxes on and sell it like we do people around here in the county? And they said, no, you can't do that, but you can appeal it. They're not paying their fair share. So I think we need to start doing that. Uh, I do not have a copy of the resolution in my package.
Well, he, uh, definitely introduce if it passes.
I don't know.
Okay. I know when it passes, he's pick and choose which ones he introduces, no matter what the road is. I'm just making sure.
Who you talking about?
Dan Howell.
I'm pretty sure he'll, I mean, he's, he is now a resident of Polk County.
Okay.
Well, then I just heard, uh, out the door, running my way over here tonight, where, uh, all of Ocoee, uh, the rafting, the waterways, the hiking, the this, the that. We get a fifty-one million dollar input to our county. That's just what they say. So I'm wanting to know who to go ask for part of that, instead of having to go up on taxes for all of us. Fifty-one million is what they said our economic input is. Where's it at?
That's why I was wondering if Bradley County would be able to put that.
I mean, I was living when I heard that. Living.
That's not, first, well, a few years ago, we had a document presented to us, Mr. Brooks.
I like how they're balancing, to balance my check.
They showed what the rafting brought into the area, regional impact, uh, and it was substantial. You remember what it was, Greg?
Oh, it's crazy.
Crazy, yeah. It was, I mean, it included YouTube?
I thought they meant what all the rafting, United States ran then.
Well, no, they're talking about, they're supposed to be the Ocoee region.
Yeah, Ocoee region. Exactly what they said. Everybody pull it back up and watch it. Believe me, I heard it right. I heard it right. Fifty-one million dollars input to this county.
That's impossible.
So, anyway, but back to Dewey's resolution.
They might gotta top that resolution.
I've got it.
Yeah, okay.
Can you read it?
Resolution to establish a request for fair share revenue to the property tax burden on local residents for services provided by the Polk County at local taxpayer expense. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Polk County has recognized the need to find financial assistance in providing law enforcement, fire and rescue, sanitation, ambulance service, road maintenance, and other services to the Cherokee National Forest. And whereas the county is basically divided in half, with Cherokee National Forest dividing east and the west, causing a duplication of many county services, including court, health department, road department, county clerk, and other services. And whereas the Cherokee National Forest encompasses over fifty-eight percent, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty point six seven acres of the two hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty acres in Polk County. And whereas the federal government has not established a fair or consistent pilt payment in lieu of taxes for the local county government to budget with. And whereas the federal government has underpaid their pilt payment in lieu of taxes, noting that they have only paid on a hundred and fifty-one thousand acres. And whereas the Ocoee River has been claimed as a non-taxable navigable river, even though it has three dams without navigable locks and a river depth is, that is only a few inches deep in many areas and heavily populated with rocks that even intertubes cannot then get stuck on. Now, therefore, being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Polk County, Tennessee, meeting on this twenty-sixth day of May at Benton, Tennessee, asks that Section One, the federal government pay a fair and consistent pilt payment to cover the added services that Polk County taxpayers must pay. And we ask that the Tennessee General Assembly pass a resolution to be sent to the Congressional House and Senate representatives to introduce legislation on or policies to pay a fair and consistent pilt and declare or clarify the definition of a navigable river, or portion thereof, above the dams as non-navigable, so that the Ocoee River and similar rivers that cannot be navigable without removing boats and redeploying them below a dam as non-navigable. This revolu- resolution shall be effective upon its passage and approval by the Polk County Commission of Public Welfare required. Adopted this twenty-sixth day of May. Motion to approve.
Second.
What was the resolution number?
Uh, C five one. Any more discussion? Rockall.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Uh, number eight, litter grant resolution.
Mr. Hatton.
This is our resolution will be five two, and this is the contract with Polk County Litter Grant Program that we apply for every year. So I'll read this resolution. Resolution authorizing the Polk County Executive to execute the contract between the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation and Polk County. Whereas pursuant to the section forty-one dash two dash one two three, the Commissioner of Transportation is authorized to make grants to counties as a purpose of funding programs for the collection of litter and trash along county-state interstate roads and highways. Whereas Polk County has submitted an application to the Department for the grant and said that the outlined plan for collection of litter and trash. And whereas Polk County agrees to emphasize education for litter control and prevention and agrees to allocate twenty percent of the contract amount towards education. And the Department and the parties want to enter into the contract, providing for the terms and the conditions to govern the expenditures of the grant funds in the amount of forty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Polk County Board of Commissioners that the Polk County Executive be authorized to sign the contract between the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation and Polk County on this twenty-fifth day, twenty-sixth day of May, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, the motion by Dewey, second by Debbie.
Debbie Davis.
Dewey what?
Debbie. Who'd you say? In it.
Debbie.
Yeah, last name.
Approved resolution five two twenty-two. Any more discussion? Rockall.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Number nine is Commissioner Teles. He's not here for table at next month.
Commissioner, Chairman's trip, and I think there was, there was somebody he said was coming down.
Oh, no, he.
Uh, name Tim Worthy. I'm from Duck Town, Florida. Come on up here if you don't care. If you don't care, come on up here. Anyway, name's Tim Worthy. I'm a Samantha. Uh, I'm a recreation, recreational comedian from Duck Town. And last few months, and that's a good talk of how we can make things better up around the community center. And I've been coaching ballpark for probably twenty years. And our playground equipment is beyond gone. It's handed down from Duck Town School. And Daniel comes to me, said, what can we do to make kids happier, make this place look better for young? I know I coach baseball. We got kids running everywhere. So Daniel asked me, he said, what can be something we can do big to help the kids? So I said, wait, our playground equipment is gone. That's the only time we got the slide and a little swing, a little timing thing. I said, I have the candidates come together and put in a good playground. I know we got some down here in Silverland by the lake and different places, but up our home it's just handed down stuff. So he told me, get some numbers. So I went looking, Googling, talking, and I talked to BYO Recreation. And she gave me some different quotes, something we can afford, and, uh, some of them's kind of small, but I seen one that she put out about the, they Googled it from Google Earth, about the area we're gonna put it in. I said, just do what you do on math. Well, y'all can put in this so-and-so type of money. And, uh, so she came back with me, got some pictures, and the one that come out with like PlayStation number nine, I can't believe it. I got pictures of stuff of it. But bought, rolled in, put up, turn the key, back out, it's thirty-two thousand dollars. I know Daniel said y'all may have some money come in, and one time we'll have the coal money. So I know might be a little, little more than that, but y'all can adjust that. I know it'd be appreciated to my kids and other kids. Right now, they're playing them pine trees in the woods, man, during baseball practice. Like I said, we got four pieces of equipment. Yeah, I was going to the Duck Town School. So let's go throw it out there. I don't know, Daniel's talked to y'all about it, brought to a bid. So if y'all do something about that, we get them all rolling, and they come up here and do what they do.
I'd be a hundred percent on board with it. My only question, can we do that without taking bids from other companies?
He said he might get a bid, so I talked to them, what we gonna do? I said, you might have to put a bid in. I said, there might be some two of them companies.
Well, I'd advertise at the paper, probably.
Right. Let's do what y'all gotta do. She said, I'd be willing to do anything. So I've got pictures of ones. I think for that area, it communicates about twenty-five of them. Let me read it. It's ten wrong.
Could you run the bid, and then next week or two, we sit down with Robbie, and y'all get the bid specs rolled up with RFPs?
Well, I've got the one, BYO. Uh, there might be some more out there. We have to.
Well, you'll have to put specs in the bids, going to do RFPs. If y'all get RFP rolled up, somebody just make a motion that Robbie do RFP, and we get the ball rolling.
Well, I appreciate it. I, I believe it'd be a, it'd be a big, I mean, I know I got lots of kids up there.
I'll make a motion with RFPs.
I got a motion by Samantha, take the RFPs, and, uh, anybody want to second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Rockall.
Good discussion.
I thought we just did discuss. You want to discuss some more?
Yeah.
Then I go ahead.
Um, we're currently eight hundred thousand in the hole with no raises for the next budget year, or one point two million in the hole if we give half a raise and one point seven million in the hole. Shouldn't we put this over to the next budget to find out what we can do?
I've seen it a whole lot worse than that right now, so it ain't too bad. Any more discussion?
What type of that fifty-one million?
Yeah, we got one-time money for this. And we can't, ain't matter, we're getting nothing done on the pole, so I mean.
I'm not against it. I just want to find a way to pay for it.
We got the money.
There's a big old white pile about right between where the pole and the playground, but you never even seen it. It's getting bigger and bigger, land getting bigger. In my opinion, I think it's going. So I mean, I got several tree companies coming to take a thing out of the ground and balled it. And it's getting, this getting worse and worse. Mid, one of them limbs or falls that thing's kid out, it's gonna be on the.
Will they do it for the wood?
No, no, they won't. White pine won't die.
What was this? Was this on trees around the park?
It's the one big white pine right by the pole and the playground. We've got it in the middle of it.
I might know that good firewood. I thought it was a line that might saw me over something.
White pine won't die right there. Low, low, low.
We've had the same issue down here, and I think the county executive, we can just contact your Parks and Rec on the issue down here on the tree that failed. I think you're processing checking it out with insurance and see what the liabilities are.
This might fail.
This may fail.
Yeah.
With potential's out here.
We may, I'm not for sure, but we may be able to see as far as the trustees, at least if we can get it cut down, then definitely be able to clean it up to go.
Get it to follow the right way, but destroy something, you have to follow right back where it parked off. I've looked at it different angles. I mean, I know people does it, bug the truck.
They'll take it down a lot cheaper though, when they ain't gotta clean it up. That's what Robbie's talking about. Gets a danger of.
Cheap. I mean, anybody who worked tree, they know it's high, high price.
Yeah, but that cleanup.
I know it's probably as somebody getting off the hill of tree. I got brought my kids out all the time. They climb the same here. You know that tree.
We're talking about getting my inmates cleaning up, so I might just come and cut it high from the bus truck. And get it working safe and ain't no.
It's about high. It's usually a good high. That cleanup, they don't like. That bucket truck, whoop, 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 and it's done. You know, they don't like the cleanup.
Have y'all looked at, uh, Miss Burris on that? She had.
No. I just made one out there. Y'all, I've seen a lot. It's, it's getting worse and worse. Let's go and go one day. When it goes, we'll take our language. When it goes, we'll take our language.
When would y'all want that RFP, uh, the, the next commission meeting in June thirtieth, I believe what y'all said, yeah, we said. And so we could either do it in June the twentieth? Or if it, I mean.
Our commission made it June the thirtieth.
Correct. If we offset it for July, the RFP would be July the eleventh. So that would be, just tell me whichever way you want it. Do you want it back in June or July?
I don't care, whatever works the best.
Think y'all have the paper this next week?
We should, that's five weeks, we got plenty of time to get it out and get the bid back in by June thirtieth meeting.
That'd be, it would be out for one, two, two and a half weeks is what technically the paper recorded. Because paper was here Tuesday.
The uh, Chamber of Commerce has got a a grant through the three-star program or by the cause of the three-star program. Uh, they've been working with the committee of the uh, Parks and Recs. And uh, they're gonna have a professional master plan for the county which will include Ducktown, Copper Hill, and Benton. And any of these uh, cities or counties can use this plan once it's developed. And it's a ten-year plan. And once this plan is developed, uh, which it should be done by, I believe, July first. And uh, when it's done, then this uh, that'll open you up for being able to get grants through the Parks and Recs from the state of Tennessee. And uh.
Is that July this year?
September not tenth is the cutoff, is when it'll be complied by September not tenth of this year.
And its purpose is to be able to apply for state of federal grants.
It will need to allow the county and each of the cities to be eligible to meet the requirements for state and federal Parks and Rec funding, recreational resource funding. We can apply now with a, an in-house developed plan that those applications are scored and the professional developed plans score much higher. I don't know of any um, recreational resource grants that we've been awarded in some time if it was applied at the state and federal level. These grants go up to a million dollars and one of them has an eighty-twenty match. And with the three-star certification, we get a three percent discount on that match.
Still a hundred ninety-four thousand.
Well, you don't have to apply for a million dollars. It goes under two millions. You can apply for two hundred thousand or whatever the case may be. It's just a lot, a, a lot more potential funding than some of these, you know, Blue Cross and Toyota and different grants that we've been able to apply for with, with federal backing.
And the cost for the uh, cost for the study is fifty thousand?
The cost for the plan is not to exceed fifty thousand dollars and it's fully funded by our grant that we have.
It's not the cost that's telling you anything.
Right.
Any more discussion? On RFPs?
I'll have it out, so that way it'll be on the twentieth of June at twelve o'clock. Somebody will make a note to be there.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenoff.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Woody.
No.
Uh, next is Chief Property, Commissioner P. D.
Chief Property, um, I hope I got everything that was needed, uh, I was contacted, I know the sale was approved uh, last month from Chief Property, there's a resolution that I handed out to.
Surplus property.
Yeah, making it, you have to make that property surplus. And then there's also a, a jointing budget being with the only the resol- the resolution passes to make the surplus. Would I give you a copy of that, Craig?
Yeah, five three twenty-two. Can we read?
Yeah, if you don't care.
Resolution five three twenty-two. Resolution discharge surplus property. Whereas the fodder listed property is a building intended to be used in longevity, long, eh, long. You spelled that wrong, y'all. Longevity. In service to the county of Polk and its continued usage has become suspect as expected outcome, which such property is being asked for. Former Polk County Board of Education property dated to Polk County on July thirteenth, twenty seventeen, towing fifteen point fourteen acres on flat book seventeen, page ninety-one of map zero three six, parcel oh oh seven dash oh eight. Address five forty-one George Bates Road, Benton, Tennessee, three seven three oh seven. Now therefore be resolved by Polk County Commission Meeting Regular Session as twenty-sixth day of May, twenty twenty-two. Certain PCA Code five dash fourteen dash one oh eight, oh, one and two than any other law of the state of Tennessee that the Polk County Executive Office here by authorized sale in part or whole of preceding property which are hereby deemed to be unusable and or surplus by the Polk County Commission. With such being made at any legal sale qualified under chapter five of Tennessee Code annotated or any other applicable law or allowance in the state of Tennessee that such proceeds sale be placed to original county, the county which originated the purpose aside the budget of county government. This resolution shall become effective on passage of public welfare required.
With the motion to approve five three.
Motion by John Holt, second by Samantha, approved resolution five three twenty-two. This basically is to keep the ball rolling on what we done last month.
That's all it is.
Any discussion?
So this is gonna be dealt with like we discussed in the book or uh, Jones screen.
Yep, and that's just part of the process. No discussion? Any more? Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenoff.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next is uh, County Executive Highway thirty resolution.
It's the resolution five four twenty-two. This is in regards to the eighteen-wheelers that are using Highway thirty as a cut-through. I don't know if you all kind of been following everything, but I was in contact or contacted by some of the residents in that area and was handed a document from the state of Tennessee that says upon the signature of a letter of support from myself to, for them to look to ban or to turn away eighteen-wheelers with fifty-three foot trailer from using Highway thirty. That community has met, they had a petition signing. Also have the uh, letters from James Jones, Steve Ross, one from myself as well as many other residents that live in that community that want to push forward in this. I was on the phone today with a Mr. Castleberry and I had a lengthy discussion. And since Highway thirty does stay in Polk County and trying to look to get this matter dealt with. It's gonna be at a higher level than us, but this is the first steps as far as moving forward to try to see those fifty-three foot box trailers that try to travel Highway thirty before somebody ends up getting hurt. Resolution reads as follows. Resolution for the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee to help ensure the health and safety of its citizens. Whereas the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee has been made aware of the damage to public property through the utilization of through-traffic passage by tractor-trailers, eighteen-wheelers in and around on Highway thirty in the Relent Greasy Creek area. More specifically, through pictures received by T-Dot showing damage, damages to bridges that has been caused by the travel on multiple occasions. And whereas legislative body of Polk County is aware that the signs at each end of the highway are not working as trucks continue to use this highway causing multiple problems with other traffic. Autos and school buses being forced off of the road. And whereas the Commissioner is aware that T-Dot and the state of Tennessee are aware of this and awaiting a review of the local legislative body before determining the next course of action. And whereas community leaders and representatives have made a violent effort in obtaining signatures from the people in and around those areas to stop through travel from eighteen-wheelers except log trucks and other vehicles which are doing business in or around that area. And whereas it is believed that the county legislative body, the trucks that create and succeed high danger with other motor vehicles and that the signs at each end of the highway are not working. These trucks continue to use this highway causing multiple problems with other traffic. Specifically, school buses being forced off of the road. Now therefore be it resolved by the Polk County Commission Meeting in regular session at the Polk County Courthouse in Benton, Tennessee on this twenty-sixth day of May, twenty twenty-two at the following request that the state be heard that all available power of the state specific to Highway thirty from Highway sixty-four to Highway four eleven to designate alternate routes for through-traffic with such signage to be well posted at the entrance of both ends of Highway thirty and for all eighteen-wheelers not having specific business in or along that route or that section of road.
Let me go through. Second motion. Motion by Dewey, second by James, approved resolution five four twenty-two. Any discussion?
If that is uh, quote-unquote, that is made a rule. That way it's listed. And there is a portion of it and that's where we'll go back to the state because any funds that do come in, this has been done previously at the tail of the dragon, not in Tennessee, but to ban trucks from using a section of roadway and it'll be up to the state to determine how those funds that come in to look as they do this as it moves forward. This is just a first step in a lengthy process. Just to let them know that not only is the residents in that area, myself, other community leaders that this county commission stands resolved with them in this fight.
Is this from the GPS satellite shortcut or something?
Most of it, from what they've come to. Yes.
They can change it, don't you?
Pardon?
They can change it if you call them.
Well, talking to everybody at the state level, they don't know who and how to get in touch with because so many programs that are being used. But what happens is, is a lot of the truck drivers would just simply use their cell phone instead of having a truck GPS. And it does, it shows that it's seven minutes faster. But if they would stay on Highway sixty-four to three fourteen back to four eleven, it'd be a lot faster as far as their travel times go.
A lot of them probably take it and not even know.
Not even know it. They do that on Baker Bridge from Charleston all the time because they got the Benton Pike listed as the primary route from the edge of Cleveland to Benton.
Yeah, UPS, FedEx driver use the GPS that takes you to your passenger field.
Yeah. And just to clarify, because I know this has been talked about, uh, with Benton Station Road and Highway sixty-eight, those roads go through Polk County into other counties and even into other parks. So this is simply because Highway thirty sits inside of Polk County itself. That's how come that we can move forward with asking them to shut this very off trucks. Well, you rock that up, I've got logging trucks on Benton Station and uh, push this for a month for years. And we were told because it goes in through. Another county you can uh, yes.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenoff.
Yes.
Mark Evans. John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next is Library Board of County Executive.
I believe you had both of the applicants for the library board?
How many openings we got?
Two.
Uh, the applicants are Tim Woody. Wakemore Spring Grove, he's with us tonight, he's a veteran service officer. Laura Crowe. And James Lloyd Davis.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's equalization board, my bad.
Those other ones are equalization board, Greg, I'm sorry.
Two are equalization, then we got one that says any board.
Equalization, that one's equalization as well.
She put down any board, but it's board of equalization.
Yes, sir.
So that's our only two, them's the library board.
Yes, sir.
Uh, one of them's got the library board of trustees. Is that different than the regular library board?
No, we're all, we all got the trustee, Trey, and we're on the library board.
I like the motion to approve these two applications.
Uh, motion by James, second by Samantha, any discussion on the former? Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenoff.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Next is equalization board, how many others we got, three?
Okay, on the board of equalization, and I'd like to explain to you why those were not in your packet. Because I was actually out of the office that day and they got overlooked. But you've also had a death from another board, from a board member, um, Vice President Jack Collins. So there are two that would go to serve on the board of equalization. And then the third one that you see would be for an alternate. The two that I recommend for the board of equalization is Crystal Fox and James Lloyd Davis. Um, Ms. Fox is in District Two and Mr. Davis is in District Three. And then to recommend Mr. Craftery, he was the one that applied the last time, but for you all to appoint him as an alternate.
And then uh, if Mr. Davis wins his election, that's come off anyway, Craig?
Yes, and it would, and another thing with the board of equalization, if y'all remember, I think it was Commissioner Brooks that pointed out a few years ago that y'all had never done that board. That, that board has to be set up through this county commission, but it also is the, one of the only boards that you cannot receive any type of county funds a- and serve on that board. So yes, if Commissioner, if much did as win as a commission seat, it would have to come off the board of equalization and we would do applications again to appoint that one seat.
Yeah, motion by Mark, second by Samantha, any discussion?
You said there's two uh, two vacancies on the board.
And all.
I know the one passed away.
Yes, sir.
Who was the other person that was?
I can't remember who inserted on that board before. If you remember before our last meeting, it's a five-person board and you had four. And with the death of Mr. Collins, you had three, you wouldn't have had enough to really have a four. So those two are the two because we were one person short last month. And I asked you all to let me run that one more time. Their training starts next week and they'll be sworn in on Wednesday. There's five total members, one off.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskenoff.
Yes.
Mark Evans. John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna go back to the lighting, lighting for the flagpole. Uh, I think we all agree besides maybe Dewey, I'm not sure, that solar lights are too dumb, man.
The solar lights are what?
Too dumb, man. No good.
You looked into it?
No good.
Why?
They what?
Why are they not?
Well, they go dim. Before.
Not commercial ones.
Well, what was gonna do, he prefers electric lights and I personally think the better too, but the original price still fell under the bid limit. So I'm gonna make back and anybody on the bill committee, I'll call and say when you can, we as the guys go put them in and Mr. Woody and his biggest expense was born under those sidewalks and uh, myself and anybody else on Ted and I think Tim, we're gonna just do that work for free, the hard part digging around the sidewalks.
Yeah.
And he's gonna come back and give us a price without having to do that if it's already done. And that was the biggest expense in his price, so we can come down net of them. And we'll get that price and then come back to commission with a new price on electric lights. And then decide, look at that and solar lights.
Okay.
So, that's good, everybody. And we gotta go back over uh, budget amendments. Did it make the fact in the budget amendments going on?
There was one that, this is, I handed out, the Chief Property, um, I did not put a budget amendment number on that.
Put a number on it. And what we do is there are several people here, I've never seen the meeting floor and as budget, year-end budget here gets closer, there's more budget amendments. And I'm not gonna bore y'all sitting here reading them thirty minutes, we just thought. And I'm not gonna bore y'all sitting here reading thirty minutes, we just offer a copy to anybody now that wants one and to the newspapers. And uh it saves everybody a lot of grief, I promise, I haven't sat through it. Do you have to have one from TCAB?
I passed it out to Brooks.
Is it for the survey?
It is for the survey board, it transfers fifteen hundred dollars from one oh one thirty-nine hundred. To uh one five eight oh oh three three five thirty?
So what's their number, total, Treese budget amendments?
Four four forty-nine is one oh.
So all of them together is number uh. Forty-one to forty-nine. If anybody wants a copy, I'll give them.
Motion to approve those budget amendments as presented.
Got a motion of John Holt, second by Samantha, any discussion on the budget amendments? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Eskomach?
No.
Mark Evans? John Kipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
And James Woody.
That's it as far as agenda uh down the now, the statements. I thought Charles was in there.
There's the one eighty-nine, one thirty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was in there.
You're not telling us no.
You said one eighty-nine and one thirty-one.
Sure.
Was number one including that Treese?
One eighty-nine dash one was not in that.
What about number one for Sheriff's Office?
That's one coming out, that's one, that's none of one eighty-nine.
So we done took your area?
No. It's gotta be done there.
Okay. All right, we got the Road Department, uh this for art money, bonuses to. Because of past employees, it's eight. Eight dash twenty-one and uh eleven dash twenty-one. And then Sheriff's Office is number one eighty-nine.
One eighty-nine ten eleven.
You got three.
Yes.
Four. And that does, that is all budget made, Greg. It's all one of those things, so I get, I don't wanna miss one, 'cause we use the time, see.
Two, three, one, three, all three. All of one thirty-one, eight thirty-one, and then one eighty-nine twenty.
Got a motion by Samantha.
Second.
Second by Deery, any more discussion?
What is contribution gives, what they transfer in, what is that?
Which one is that?
Hannah, he's asking about your gifts.
That's the, the total money.
So on the original, when we did the art money, Patrice transferred the whole amount.
Okay.
Two twenty-five for the maximum amount for the employees that had passed. I did check with the, which is the county attorney, he did tell me the process that needed to happen to make those contributions to the uh goodness. Those payments, it was only, as the resolution read, two twenty-five per month. So that was Resolution uh nine dash twenty-one. That's the payments that's been made to the beneficiaries. So the eleven dash twenty-one, that's the remainder of that money that the county has already transferred to us. So I need to put it in an expenditure loan and pay it back to the county.
Okay.
So that six thousand seventy-five dollars is coming back to one oh one.
But just cleaning everything up at the end of the year, like. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Eskomach?
Yes.
Mark Evans? John Kipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
And James Woody.
Yes.
Uh now, states, uh first of all, I'd like to say, I'd like to acknowledge our annual service, they got an award with the last month.
Uh it started here this month.
Yeah, you can, uh they were one of only three annual services in the United States to receive awards. And you tell them.
All right, I didn't, uh we uh, each year, uh there's eight regions in Tennessee for EMS. Uh each year, certain calls that are ran, you know, in the previous year can be nominated for each region. Each region, they select uh one call for that region for that year uh to receive a Star Life. Uh we got it for Region Three this year uh from the incident that happened September first on four-eleven. A crystal guy's or a tractor-trailer versus, or dump truck versus tractor-trailer. Uh guy had some pretty severe life-threatening facial injuries. We, it was us, we had a McMahon crew that backed us up and then fly crew with the UT Live Star. Then we all worked together and said we'd get him to definitive care, he made an amazing recovery. Uh but it reunit's the crews with those patients. Uh you know, so that you can see how well that they're doing and stuff, so. But yes, we did get that for this year, got to go to Nashville for that. And also just the updates, uh since the thirteenth of this month, we have been running four trucks, twenty-four seven. So we're up and running on that, and tomorrow will be two weeks that we've had that going finally, so.
Has it made a difference?
Yeah. Yeah, um there's been a couple of times, it's kept us from having to call for other, other counties for help and stuff already.
Has it been at level zero since you went before?
At least once, I know of.
Even on the fold?
Yeah. Yeah, and it's gonna happen, I mean, no matter how many trucks you got, but. Um it has cut down drastically the number of times that we have been at level zero, so.
Anybody can get a message, Bob?
Yes, I'd like to say this, watching the new service come in, develop uh the way they have. When I hear my staff bragging in this particular call and when we had just a few nights ago. Uh I will be, I work, I run the annual services county, I know what it takes, it's been rough. This guy's done a good job, commission's been supportive of it, I'm glad to see that. But ultimately, to be able to see this award, here's what I want to do. My staff constantly relates how well they do their job and we have a great working relationship.
Well, I feel good, I think, I, I'm not so sure we made the right decision, like the contract. I believe overwhelming majority of citizens do. I know, you know, all of us are fairly successful to the public, you know, through phone calls or small town, everybody sees, yeah. Especially main mode everywhere, I don't care to walk up and chew my butt out, but it's been, as far as ambulance, I've heard less complaints. That I have all my years since we hired our new company. So it's something to be served in a community way. And y'all too do a good job, y'all are on better call day, so we appreciate all of you. Anybody else, can I say, I don't get up to Samantha, go ahead.
Well, um I'm from the library, so I'm supposed to present tonight? I'm just giving a report, we're required.
I think that's the budget time, budget meeting.
No, we're not having budget, I'm just here to give a report.
Oh.
You know, like, just let you know we're still alive and functioning. Because that's part of our standards with the state that we present to our county commission, just an annual report. Can I do that?
Yeah, go ahead, have it.
Well, I know y'all have put your paperwork away, but I'm gonna, wouldn't be a library meeting with our board without something to read, right? This shows West and East Polk libraries, our services, our materials. The library continues to be an interactive learning hub of our communities, reaching out to youth with the weekly storytime and monthly craft nights. While adults can enjoy some creative time to themselves with our monthly book club and bimonthly adult craft club. The year-to-date youth programs is ninety-two with seven hundred and twenty-five attendees. Year-to-date adult programs, a hundred and seven with four hundred and ninety-five attendees. Our libraries are gearing up for our annual summer reading program with the theme this year focused on our oceans. The theme is Oceans of Possibilities. The activities will include storytimes weekly on Mondays, two PM East Polk, three PM West Polk. Adult craft club on June twenty-eighth, the West Polk at five. July twenty-sixth, East Polk at five. We're gonna have a hike with your librarian, we're partnering with our state parks to hike along the John Year Trail. On Sunday, June twenty-sixth at four. And then the reading challenge for all ages begins June first through August thirty-first. They get to read books, earn prizes, and get their name in a drawing for a grand prize. And the report that I handed to you shows our circulation. So that's the report from the library, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm Kathy Hansen, by the way, from D M, I didn't introduce myself.
Anybody have county amendments?
We need to set the next budget meeting. And I'd like to see if the same, before the budget meeting, I'd like to see a handbook committee meeting because if we decide that we're gonna give hourly raises. We need to set whether we have hourly workers in the county or salary workers in the county.
We're salary slash hour. What we're considering by state.
Right. But if we're gonna give hourly raises, are we giving it on thirty-two hours or are we giving it on forty hours? It needs to be spelled out in the handbook specifically before we decide anything like that, so that we know how to budget.
It's a uh during the summer, we saw the same first hand, how hard it is to get a quorum at a committee meeting, but. Soon as, when you text everybody and we see that we can get a quorum there for the budget meeting, we'll also have a handbook committee meeting. What, thirty minutes prior?
Whatever.
To save money, that way we won't get paid for two committee meetings.
That's fine.
We've got two whole issues on handbooks, not when we get forty-five minutes.
Well, we'll just say six on the handbook, seven on the budget, one week, coordinate, make sure we got a quorum here. In case anybody's wondering, reading, we try to do them on the same nights, we get paid uh very little. But we get fifty for committee meeting, but if we have two of them in the same night, we still just get paid for one. So we try to have two at a time, save money, it's doing both in one evening, saves a lot of money in a year's time. So when we figure out the budget meeting and everybody can be here, we'll have a handbook committee meeting at six same day.
We got the seventh, ninth, or sixteenth.
Can everybody text Deery the next couple of days with the twenty-seventh, ninth, and sixteenth? Just let him look and see when he thinks the most can be there.
That's a gene, yes.
Everybody write down seventh, ninth, and sixteen, and look at your calendar and your plans and get with you the next day or two.
No, we got it, we have it thirty.
Yeah. I did talk to the comptroller's office today, they said we need to have a budget passed by June thirtieth. They do have extenuated circumstances, they'll allow it to the end of August if there's technicalities, if there's emergencies that come up and you can't do it. But they said they would like to see something by June thirtieth so that you can start off the new year on July first.
Well, I talked to Heather again today and she said, long as we're working on it by June the thirtieth, working toward it. She said, she says she has other counties don't even have the first budget made to June the twenty-eighth.
I talked to the comptroller, didn't talk to Heather.
Well, she guaranteed, what she said, she said we need to be working toward it by then, but as long as it's passed by August twenty-eighth. John Holt, am I right, or am I right?
She don't audit it, the comptroller does.
John Holt, how what you think?
I got an email from C-Pass, had a copy of the code, that said August.
Twenty-eighth.
I don't know this last, August last, the August, that's all I can tell you about it, I did get one a month ago.
But we need to be working towards it hard by June twenty-eighth. We got certain places we need to have done in the budget by June twenty-eighth. But it'd be good to get it done by then, I agree with you, but uh. So everybody write those three days down, seventh, ninth, and sixteen, text you over the next couple of days. And let him look and see when we can get the most there and he can notify water and we'll go from there. And uh have a handbook meet, committee meet the same night at six o'clock, that sound good, everybody? Got a motion, do you hear me?
So do.
Chairman Brooks? One quick thing, uh Abbot Spoke nine eleven will be holding our Memorial Day service Monday at eleven o'clock here at courthouse. I'd like to laugh on their right invite.
Hey Greg, one, one time real quick, this is not county business, but the reason I'm gonna say something is because just to show. What a great community and how people think of each other. Uh my grandson passed away on May the fifth, and uh.
Go ahead, we'll get to that.
The ongoing support of the county was unbelievable. And thanks to all of my commission friends and people in the courthouse, flowers, donations to Saint Jude. And uh it was just unbelievable, there were sixty-four cars in his funeral procession. And uh I just wanna thank the community and uh just to add to that, that just goes to show that when we have a tragedy amongst us. We need to show each other all the support we can because you can't believe how I appreciate it. So anyway, all of that, now that I've had my come aboard, but just thank y'all, and we just live in a great place.
If you're not doing anything Saturday, I've tried to catch Greg, but they're having the coed softball game up on the east side of the county. If I want to be a part of that, you can go with that, I also have the wrapping tickets, we'll be drawing a happy leaf some free. So all proceeds go to East Polk Sports.